Back in session, please rise from the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, and we have some distinguished guests here. Four recently gentlemen here reached their goal of Eagle Scout, having been a Boy Scout myself and managed to get to life before I got old enough to go to college. Never quite made it, so I know it's quite an achievement. And I think we'll start by... Do we have a proclamation? Or we're just gonna read?
We're just gonna read what you have.
Okay, we'll read the proclamation. Okay.
Why don't you let Jeff take the lead on it and introduce the successful candidates?
Gentlemen, feel free to come up here. And let's see, so that you can be in the camera so everyone can see your wonderful faces. You can face us.
You can face us.
Can we get their faces?
Great.
He hasn't switched.
Are you on me, is that it?
There he goes.
I'm not the important one here. First of all, let me read to you that on behalf of the town, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, that we are offering you a certificate of recognition. The town of North Reading is honored to present this certificate as an expression of its high regard to Ian First, Eli Spicer, Scott McGrath, and Jeremy Copeland Susie upon attaining the rank of Eagle Scout as members of the Boy Scouts of America and to extend a personal thank you for the community service you worked performed in achieving this honor. It's signed by Chairman Robert Musseri, by Vice Chairman Michael Prisco, by Joe Foddy, by Stephen O'Leary, and myself, Jeff Yure. So I'm gonna first give you applause. And let me say that I coached three of you, no, two of you in soccer.
You're not taking responsibility.
Well, I was wondering about if they got a pin for that. You would deserve it. But appreciate what you've accomplished. You've reached the highest possible goal that you can make in a given organization. And the Boy Scouts is a well-respected, well-known organization that brings out the best of the Scouts. And you retained that, and you should feel very good about that. But why don't you look around the room and see your parents, us, okay? You're about to head onto an adventure because you've also graduated from high school. And you're going on to college.
You graduated from your house.
But you're gonna go on an adventure that everybody in this room has. And it's an exciting adventure. You're going to have something that... Is anybody else here an Eagle Scout? No. So you're starting one-up on everybody else, so feel very good about that. And I'd like to shake your hand and thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Can you take a picture?
Pictures.
Congrats.
Ian First.
Ian First.
Thank you. Jeremy.
Congratulations again.
Do I take a picture over here?
Yeah, I thought maybe the...
As close together as possible. You can never get rid of each other. And the four Eagle Scouts behind you. Okay.
Eli, put me on your shoulder.
So I'm gonna go over here.
Should we hold on to those?
Nobody is.
Go ahead. I'll get out of here.
Kind of not a smiling.
It's okay. Just gonna take a couple. Great, thank you. Thank you.
Hold on, hold on. I think there's some others.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Enjoy your summer.
Congratulations.
You can stay if you want.
The community service is done.
There's no badges.
Okay, we have...
Still luck.
Bless you.
All right, I'm gonna skip over the minutes for now since we have Chairman of Solid Waste Committee here to just inform us. I believe some of us have received phone calls regarding the two-barrel limit.
Yep, I have received.
And they have a solution, and I just think we need to get that out to the public. So if you want to come up and tell us what the plan is. I think we've been all informed.
Well, the plan is, it's basically, there's a common sense element to this program. And it's not something that's unique to North Reading. It's also been done another... We've talked with other towns, there's a common sense element. If it's a two-barrel limit, you have another bag out there or an extra barrel because you had a party, it'll be taken. They'll take it. We pretty much know, the drivers know what homes are perpetually putting out three or four barrels a week. And, you know, if you have an instance, I have a couple ideas. If it doesn't work, we're trying to keep it as simple for the residents as possible, a simple phone call or email to the DPW that would cover it. You know, where they say at 12 Oak Street, I have, we have a graduation party this weekend, we're gonna have extra trash. Fine, we'll take it. That's all you have to do. But talking with Dick Carnavale, there's a common sense element in it, and if there's extra trash on that day, they're gonna take it. We're not leaving trash out on the curbside for a lot of reasons. And so we're just trying to get it down. The numbers, I just got the main numbers today, and we've already, we're up to eighty-five thousand, over eighty-five thousand dollars in savings and they avoided tip fees. The recycling rate is over 23 percent, and we've surpassed last year's totals for paper and the co-mingled and recycled with one month ago. So trash is down over 7 percent right now. And if I looked at the chart in town meeting, that chart I showed about trash over the last five years, it's even gonna be drastically down. We've reduced our solid waste by a thousand tons a year since FY '09. So, you know, we've made progress. The state's has other programs that we've kind of put off, you know, organic, you know, so you're gonna hear a lot on organics, they're trying to get food waste out of it. And even in this, in the recycling community, there's been some discussions. We're expending all this effort and resources on another waste stream when there's still plenty of paper in the... You go to the incinerators, and there's plenty of paper lying on the floor ready to get burned in the incinerator. So the thoughts, you know, some people have talked, why don't we focus on getting more paper out? That's what I've been doing, trying to get, just capture the paper. The schools have been helpful, the school department's working with these moves, they got extra toters in there, and teachers, they've got programs going to collect, you know, as they clean out the files and the drawers, and, oh, I have this binder I haven't used, you know, in three years, I don't need it anymore, and, you know, all the paper inside's getting recycled. So I think the effort's there to keep going, keep the savings, and again, it's gonna be a common sense effort, effort on the part of JRM and the DPW. And if JRM's the eyes on the road, and people see it, and if someone's putting out four barrels of trash each week, there's probably gonna be a discussion about that with that individual. But the onesies, twosies over the course of a year is not gonna be an issue.
So what is the plan to deal with someone that perpetually casts more than two barrels a week out there? How is that gonna be handled?
I'm gonna have to defer to Dick on that one. I don't know how. I know Paul, the recycling guy and his staff will go visit, will go talk to the people and see what's going, find out what's going on, why they're putting out that trash. But anything beyond that, I don't have an answer for you. I'd be talking out of school, I'd be making it up. I'm not going knocking on the doors, I already told.
So the infrequent household that puts, I mean frequently puts out three because they've had a potty of four, or they've done spring cleaning or whatever, that will just get picked up without comment? There's nothing they have to do?
Right, right now, that's the way it is. Yep. And I don't, and Dick, my thought, my idea was trying to make it as easy for the residents, email. Get it, set up an email and just contact, you know, send it to DPW. DPW comes in Monday morning, you know, Ed McGrath's gonna have extra trash this week, they forward it right on to JRM so the driver knows, just take it, they don't have to make a phone call, you know, so.
First of all, thank you for the great, great work you have done and your committee has done through the years. I know when I was on the committee, when I was Selectmen before, you guys were doing a great job, you're doing an even better job. I don't know how many calls our Selectmen received. I know I received one, okay? And that's one out of how many households? So it's a very, to me, a very small percentage. And unless we're getting like 500 or 600 calls, it strikes me that it's a very small minority. I can only speak for myself as far as a resident in town is concerned. I'm a family of four, and on average, we fill up one trash 75 percent. That's it. That's a family of four. And I can't comprehend how a family of two would have a problem with two barrels. It doesn't add up, it doesn't equate for me, okay? So, you know, I think you're going less than two is out of the question, and I think that when you, if someone has a third one, okay, they have a third one and just, you know, deal with it and move on. But I just don't understand those who have an issue with this, unless they're a family of 15, I don't think they should have a problem with two barrels. The whole town should... And we're saving money.
Right.
That's the whole bottom line. I mean, what's the cost again, 56-50?
Four.
What's our cost on that again? That we charge?
Cost per ton.
Well, the cost per ton right now...
No, 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 that we charge our residents for trash.
Two-twenty-six a year.
Yeah, two-twenty-six a year.
Two-twenty-six a year, okay? And it hasn't gone up?
In years, and we've added services to it.
And they had services.
Last week, we had the special collection, we had over 300 cars show up, households come in.
That was great.
Yeah, and we filled that plastic dumpster with rigid plastics, was filled, overflowing, the scrap metal was overflowing. There's about 100 prodigal propane tanks were collected.
And replenished broken recycling bins.
So the community is coming together on this.
Yeah.
Okay? That's my observation. The community is coming together on this, and we're doing, and they're doing a great job. They should be recognized for that.
And just to your point is, when JRM did the survey last month, it was, it was over, of course, about 6 percent of the households had more than three or more barrels out, about 250 households had three or more barrels out, out of 4,300. So, you know, it's a small percentage of people, and I think on a weekly basis, it's a small percentage of people that, and I think it's, we're trying to, I had an article in the paper last week about how can you capture more paper? What we're gonna try to do is come up with some things people can do and think about what they're doing in their house, what can they change in their house to be able to, you know? My idea is have, make sure you have a recycling basket upstairs to capture the paper and plastics upstairs, you know, that type of thing, so.
I place us on the agenda not to ever suggest that we were going down the wrong path and we wanted to change it. I just wanted to get out how people that were concerned that on occasion they have more than two barrels, was it gonna be left out? The correct answer is clearly no.
No, no.
But that needed to be said to everybody. I'm like...
I received, I think, about three calls, and they all had the same issue. I'm getting less, and so I want a reduction in my costs. So I explained it to all of them the same way. If you go back and look at your trash bill for the years and years now, it has not changed. And we had a new contract come into play, and the only way we could affect, positively affect you by not increasing your bill was to make this change. And they didn't, a lot of them, they had no idea. All three people said, well, I didn't know that.
Yep.
And that's why the bills are not going up. We had to make this structural change so the taxpayers didn't have, the ratepayers didn't have to pay more. And when you look at that study, it's such a small percentage. They have to get on board because not, the other 95 percent or 94 percent of the town shouldn't have to pay for that small percentage of people that can't get it down to two.
Yep.
And I applaud you and the DPW Director for coming up with a common sense approach because I just had a graduation party myself, I had an extra bag, and my neighbor was nice enough to take the other one because she only had one barrel. That was great. But this is excellent, and I love it. And it should reduce phone calls and extra work on everyone, so I applaud you for the effort.
Thank you. And I would suggest that with people talking about the rate going down, we've added some services and haven't changed the price.
Right.
The rate. You know, we had the shredding event, we've had this collection last week, expanded the special collection, they've done the curbside waste, yard waste, they doubled that. So there's been stuff added to the program. And, you know, our motto since day one back in the 90s has been, give people the opportunity to do the right thing. That's what we've been trying to do. And, you know, whether it's the special collection, the hazardous waste, we're trying to do something. We can't replicate what some of the larger towns do, and, you know, they have full-time people on staff doing it, so we're trying to do it with volunteers and, you know, and I think we do, we have a pretty good program, and I think we're all respected within the recycling industry, and that, I think we're stealing the ideas from other towns and saying, yeah, we can implement this, and there's other ones. I go, though, well, that's nice, but we're not gonna be doing that, you know?
Thank you for your continued efforts on this and commitment because it really truly has saved every ratepayer in town money. So, thank you.
And if I can, give a shout-out to the parks. We got extra containers. That's been a big gripe over at the little league fields and the softball fields and all that, and we got some extra cages. And I was at the little school today, and next to the concession stand, they're both full, there's another bag of bottles there, so, you know, we're giving people the opportunity, and baseball's getting behind it. So it's, you know, we're growing, it's gradual, and, you know, if you want it faster, you gotta get, you had, when we first started this, we had a recycling coordinator on staff. You know, now that we don't really have that person, so, you know, we gotta go baby steps, I guess, you know, what can we take on? So, but it's going.
It's all been positive.
Yeah.
We thank you for that.
You and your organization have been very patient and persistent.
Yep.
And it is paying off, and it's been years.
Yeah.
Yes.
It has been years.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
And thanks for coming by.
Okay, very good.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We have minutes. Mr. O'Leary?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the April 28, 2014 regular session minutes as written.
A second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, seconded by Mr. Yure. Discussion? Mr. Yure?
Because it's before my time, I'm going to abstain on all the minutes before my time, so, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstain.
Mr. Chairman, on the May 1st ones, based upon what I'm reading, I don't think that was a clear reflection as to what transpired that evening, so I would suggest that we postpone that and maybe have some additional input that was requested.
Okay, I kind of went through those missing minutes with Karen and Jackie, and can you get back to them on what you think is missing?
Yeah, that was the one that required a vote to reconsider and some discussion that took place. Yeah. So with your permission, we'll hold off on that.
So that's the May 1st, right?
Is that a motion?
No, just, we just won't act on it.
What?
We just won't act on that one.
Yeah. Executive session on May 2nd?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the May 2nd executive session minutes as written.
A second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, seconded by Mr. Yure. Discussion? Mr. Yure?
Because it's before my time, I'm going to abstain on all the minutes before my time, so, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Abstained?
Abstain.
Mr. Chairman, on the May 1st ones, based upon what I'm reading, I don't think that was a clear reflection as to what transpired that evening, so I would suggest that we postpone that and maybe have some additional input that was requested.
Okay, I kind of went through those missing minutes with Karen and Jackie, and can you get back to them on what you think is missing?
Yeah, that was the one that required a vote to reconsider and some discussion that took place. Yeah. So with your permission, we'll hold off on that.
So that's the May 1st, right?
Is that a motion?
No, just, we just won't act on it.
What?
We just won't act on that one.
Yeah. Executive session on May 2nd?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the May 2nd executive session as written.
Second. Prisco?
Prisco.
Discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ananamous?
He was abstaining.
You abstaining?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry. And we have the regular session on May 7th. Mr. O'Leary?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the May 7th regular session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, seconded by Mr. Yure. Discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Prisco?
My meeting packet, unless I missed it, I didn't have May 7th in my meeting packet.
I didn't see me either, but I have a paper packet here in front of me.
No, this is 2nd, not 7th.
7th, sorry, May 7th.
No, but his motion's on 2nd.
No, this is on the 7th.
7th.
I don't have it either, Mike.
It isn't in here either.
Yeah, the 7th, the 14th, or the 19th are not in here.
No, but what's on the agenda is the 7th, the 20th, and the 29th. And the 20th is in here, and the 29th is in here. Oh, not the 20th, sorry, the 29th is in here, yes. It's just the 7th is missing. So I'd ask if it's okay for us to pass over that one as well. I'll withdraw my motion, if Mr. Yure withdraws his 2nd.
I withdraw my 2nd.
Okay.
Maybe I'm getting confused here because I thought you were talking about the 2nd, but that's the executive.
The 2nd, we already voted on, you abstain. You abstain.
Then what about the 1st?
1st, we did that, and you, 1st, we're holding off on that because...
Okay, okay. Thank you.
May 1st, and then May 7th.
Yeah, we'll have to future meeting on this. Hold, okay. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the May 20th executive session minutes as written. 2nd.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, seconded by Mr. Prisco. Discussion?
Yes, that's the 20th. I was not in agreement with that. In fact, I was not in agreement with anything I voted. No one knows.
Which one?
I think that's true.
So we want to, we can amend those to...
So Jeff, you were against authorizing Mr. Musseri to engage with Mr. Galberto in the contract negotiations?
There was the first discussion that we had where Bob was going to discuss with the new TA. But this is the second discussion, and the content of that, to go back, I wasn't in agreement with. I was in agreement to initially go, that was a different meeting, but this is the second meeting, this is the follow-up to go back with additional terms.
Okay.
And I wasn't in agreement with those terms. So you can just simply say that was 4 to 1, and just change my A to an A.
I'm just saying, we didn't actually, all we did was get a consensus, we didn't actually take a vote.
Right.
All we did was get a consensus.
That was gonna be my comment.
Okay, if we, all we did was get a consensus.
So we're gonna, as amended, it's gonna be, the consensus of a 4 to 1 consensus.
4 to 1 consensus, okay.
We do vote.
Yeah, we didn't have a recording.
I didn't think, yeah. And just change the A to an A.
Okay, so 4 to 1 consensus, Mr. Yure opposed. No, no, this was to go in.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
So on the...
As amended?
So as amended.
As amended, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Oh, you were opposed, you were opposed, okay, fine, all right.
Well, now, now I voted.
Now he's okay.
I'm okay with it.
It was a 5, it was a 5-0.
You're good. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the May 29th executive session minutes as written. 2nd, okay.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, seconded by Mr. Yure. Mr. Yure? Discussion?
Yeah, the same would apply on that.
This is, no, this was the discussion with the chief. That's that one. Yeah, this is the one that, this was on the...
Oh, oh, okay, okay. No, no, you're right, you're right, I apologize.
Different matter.
I apologize. Abstain.
So we're okay the way it is?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, you can put that, we'll draw a vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Okay. Takes care of the minutes. We have the 1st and the 7th to bring back at our next meeting.
Right.
Okay. Legal bills for April.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve legal bills for April 2014 in the amount of $8,936.53. As follows, Copeland and Page, PC General, $4,033.53; Copeland and Page Labor, $2,790; West, I believe that's West Publishing, $2,113; total, $8,936.53.
Do I have a 2nd?
2nd.
Second by Mr. Yure. Mr. Belkonis, the, on occasion, we get a bill for the legal documents. Does that, that's more than once a year?
Yes, the law books, yes. Yes.
Is it random, or is it quarterly, or...
Probably twice a year, Bob.
Twice a year, okay. Further discussion?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
I abstain.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You can abstain?
I'm abstaining on it, yeah.
Jeff, is it abstaining?
Okay.
Okay.
I don't think you can abstain on that.
I don't think there's anyone here for public comment.
Doesn't appear to be.
So open discussion on Tennessee Gas Pipeline Coalition of Communities. Mr. Belkonis?
For them, this is a copy of a letter that's in your packet from the town administrator in Pepperell, John Moke. And John is sending a letter to all of the communities that will be impacted by the proposed Tennessee Gas Pipeline, and has indicated that his board is proposing that a coalition of communities consisting of the Board of Selectmen and their respective administration be set up. I think it's a good idea, and I think it's timely, given the hearing that you had. I think it's a good idea, and I think it's timely, given the hearing that you had last week, to get together with the other communities. I'm sure it will likely involve some meetings going forward so that the communities can ensure that they're on the same page, and if the board is in favor of this, then we will communicate back to them that North Reading will be represented going forward by its administration.
Now, is he the kind of the central individual putting this together?
The town of Pepperell is, I think John is stepping down, so there'll be someone in that community who'll be assuming that position shortly.
Comments? Discussion?
Good idea?
Mr. Yule?
Yeah, so you say John Mask, is that right? So, he's... Moke, I guess.
Yeah, John.
So, he's going to be no longer as the town...
Well, my understanding is John is stepping down, just...
Do you know...
But that doesn't mean the fact that they won't continue with some momentum within the community, Jeff.
Well, he's probably doing this because of selectmen asking...
Exactly.
I would assume.
Exactly. This is a Board of Slackman's initiative, not an administrator's issue, which is why I wanted to bring it to the board.
Yeah. I sent you an email, Bob, on this. After I read it, I thought it was a good idea, that I'd be more than glad to represent the town of Reading on a committee such as this. The time purpose is I'm the newest member of the board. This is just starting, so it's three years I can dedicate to it, in that sense. So, that's the primary reason.
Well, before we do that, let's determine just what our involvement...
Yeah.
Mr. O'Leary?
I think it's a good idea. I think there's strength in numbers, and I think we can pool our resources, and I think the first people we should reach out to and contact a little bit more is Copeland and Page, and see how many communities they represent are affected, how many of their communities are affected, and that certainly would be a good starting point, but I think there's a whole host of issues and unanswered questions as to really what role we can play, and what we can do and can't do. I think a coalition of our state rep and state senator, along with other state reps and senators whose districts are being affected, can form a strong coalition to really get to the heart of the issue in relation to what role can we really play? How can we get the federal government to listen to these communities and find out if there is a better alternative route that they should be looking at, which may not be the most cost-effective for this company, but may have less of an impact on the communities? And unfortunately, it's a... They tend to benefit from divide-and-conquer type, you know, piecemeal approach in each community, rather than a coalition of communities getting together and really forming a coalition to address the issue as a whole. And I think that, along with the state legislative delegations who are affected, would be the right way to go, and I think it needs to happen sooner rather than later, because based upon what that public hearing was, the information... I mean, they said, "We haven't filed anything yet, we haven't filed anything yet," but then all of a sudden, it's gonna come on very quickly. Sounds like in the fall, they're about ready to start big some filings, and we need to be able to react a little better than we are now.
And in my mail this evening, when I opened, there's a letter and some information about Attorney Peter Flynn from Sogas, I think he's in Sogas...
He is.
Who claims that he successfully worked against Tennessee Valley and other communities within the community, including in 2008, I think there's a newspaper thing there in the envelope. I just saw it tonight, so I asked Greg to photocopy and put it in the folder I created in Dropbox, so everyone have a copy of it. But, you know, he's claiming that he's successfully led to a point where he backed off of doing whatever they were gonna do in Lynnfield in 2008, which I never heard of, but it's easy enough to find out. But I agree with you.
They're pretty well invested into this project right now.
Yeah.
And, you know, I think, again, I've spoken to some people that... Former colleagues that I've worked with that are with the town of Pepperell that are being impacted by it, and, you know, it appears as though, from what he said, you know, some of their communities are just starting to throw their hands up and say, "There's anything we can do about it." So, I think, successful in getting that message across, and everybody does the same thing, then they're gonna be successful in getting what they want. I don't think they should do that without some sort of more discussion and take another look at, is there a more reasonable approach from a community impact standpoint, taking a different route? Again, when it was suggested by someone, I don't recall who, you know, have you looked at going down the side of the highways? You know, yes, that's feasible, but, oh, that would take all this approval, that would have to go through the state and everything else, and they're kind of poo-pooing it. So, I mean, you're impacting people's front yards, backyards, and putting it right, you know, just several feet from their homes and their bedrooms.
Essentially devaluing their property to the point where, I mean, it's tough enough that they got an easement on their property for the power lines.
Right. So, it's... So, I think it's a good thing that we should be working towards getting some sort of a coalition, a community coalition put together, and if someone's taking the initiative, that's great. Let's join in, and we can start with Copeland and Page, and see how many of the communities they represent.
Yeah, I will follow up with the Copeland and Page on that piece of it. How do we want to deal with the letter from Pepperell? What would be the best approach? Jeff has volunteered to make contact.
I think it's great. I think I have Jeff to make the contact.
Just to acknowledge it on behalf of the town.
Find out what they're doing, who else they're talking to, get a list.
Well, I mean, why don't we... Is everybody on board with this?
Sure.
I am as well.
Okay.
One thing I would like to see him do, though, is to get in front of the federal Energy Regulatory Commission right away, and they need to know that we've established this coalition, and that they need to make them part of the discussion.
I think you gotta stop by making sure there's a real coalition here.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So, I mean...
You get a coalition until you find out that there's some resources that need to be committed.
Well, that's always... That's another question I was gonna have.
Yeah. So...
I'm all for it. And I...
Find out who else they've sent this to, what kind of response.
Now, I'm a little surprised they didn't CC, you know, put a bunch of CCs there to show that the...
And I wouldn't be afraid to refer them to our webpage to look at our fact sheet that we put up, and I thank you, Mr. Belkonis, for getting that posted, and I hope others in the community have had the opportunity to go look at that fact sheet, because it's an eye-opener. It really does show you how limited we are control some of our residents have over their own property.
Yeah, but I think Steve is right. The key is to work to show that there's a less obtrusive route that impacts the fewer people would be, whatever that is.
Yeah.
And I think we need to find out a little bit more from the people that now currently have the easement, to see what their appetite is, and if there's any type of... I was thinking about this too, you know, if there's any type of remuneration that they're going to benefit in relation to allowing this pipeline to go through their easements on their property, it certainly would impact the value of those easements, maybe the assessed valuations. If these things are going to be approved and go through, there should be some more money coming our way, because if there's a national grid, this is gaining some benefit as a result of those easements, the value of those easements increase, and therefore, the value of them are up, and they should be assessed appropriately, and the town should be paid appropriately. And I think if each community takes that same approach, maybe a national grid would be less inclined to talk about it, too.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, does national grid who has the rights underneath the power lines, do they have a financial advantage to doing this? Do we know?
Well, you don't know what kind of dollars being cut.
We don't know.
Yep, that's one thing they have... They haven't got a commitment from national grid to even do this.
My guess is that they wouldn't have invested all of these tens and hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions, at this point, in order to get this route mapped out without some sort of conversation having taken place. It may not have gotten a formal commitment from them yet, but my guess is, if they're following this route, there must have been some positive response.
Right, I agree.
Yeah.
You know, there was some... A year ago, there was a lot of work being done along the entrances to the various right-of-ways for the cable, you know, from the roads.
Right.
They were clearing and cleaning, and in some places where they were wet, they were putting down these big, looked like railroad ties.
Or drives the heavy equipment.
Yeah, so they get equipment in there, and, you know, was that being done because of what's been going on here in the background, or was it being done because there'd been a lot of talk about making it, making the power lines more secure, and things like that? I don't know, but it makes you think about all of this happening at the same time.
Yeah.
Can't help but be suspicious.
Yeah.
Yep.
With good reason. So, I think it's great that they spent some outreach, and I think we should help to get facilitated.
So, is it...
Strengthened.
There is a phone number and...
Yep, they have information.
Contact info right now.
I know where Pepperell is, so I can find it without Googling it.
I have a client in Pepperell. I hate to go there.
Jeff, I have John's email, so I can just simply email you with John's email address.
That'll work, too, you know, so, thank you very much.
Maybe do we want to have a conversation with the attorney that sent us this information to?
Well, I think...
Won't cost us anything to have a conversation with him?
No, doesn't cost us anything, and I think if there's a coalition formed, it's probably a nice place for him to go market his services.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe Jeff could help facilitate that. I guess we'll probably have the only one that he sent over.
I'm sure not.
But this isn't from the attorney.
No, no, no.
No, no. You haven't seen it. There was something in here.
Oh, okay.
And Greg is gonna scan it and put it in Dropbox, okay? It's from Peter Flynn, who claims that he has represented a bunch of communities effectively, you know, holding off Tennessee Valley gas.
They gotta see.
Yeah. So, selling his services, okay? Take it for what it worth.
I could go all the way.
Okay. Any further discussion on the Tennessee Gas Pipeline? Okay, and we're gonna pass over...
Just other than that, I think the public hearing went very well. Michael, I think he did a great job of moderating it, and got a lot of facts out. People were heard. I don't think anybody felt as though they were shut off, and probably left a lot more questions than we...
Our state representative had...
And I think our state representative, state senator being there was important, and I think was very informative, and my guess is we maybe have another one at some point in time.
If I may work off of what Steve just said, you did a superb job, to be quite frank. I was, while I was well organized, and I think at the very beginning, you made sure that no one got out of hand, and I think you addressed that right away, because it could have been a shouting match, and that was a good job, to say the least. But something happened at the end, and I don't know if it happened to anybody else, but a woman came up to me and asked me who I was, and I looked, and I said, "I'm Jeff Yule," and I see she had my name on her list, and then I asked, "Who are you?" And she said she couldn't divulge that. Did that happen to anybody?
No, but I know I've been on a lot of people's lists over the years.
She couldn't, she wouldn't divulge who she was, and I feel bad because I mentioned my name, but what concerns me is that, and I wondered about meetings like this isn't... This was a hearing, right? So, anybody can come to a hearing, whether they're from downtown or from...
There was some... There's a group that's been going to all these hearings that are, you know, they're... And they were passing papers out.
Yeah, they had their...
Well, the guy from Draycut, we knew, because he said he was from Draycut, but this woman... At first, I thought she was a reporter from a newspaper, to be quite frank with you, but when she wouldn't... She didn't say she was from the Globe or from the Herald or whatever, she just said, "No, we're a private organization, we can't tell you." I can't tell you anything.
That's okay.
No, that was me, it's not good.
I mean, did she ask you any questions, Josh, or just...
No, she just asked my name, and she had it on her list, and I'm defensive that.
Well, unfortunately, as a public official, it's public information. Your name is public information, so she asked you who you were, you didn't have to answer it, or she could have someone else, so...
That's true. I just didn't understand why she couldn't divulge who she was.
She's not a public official, she doesn't have to.
Well, I don't know that.
But you are a good-looking guy, Jeff. You never know.
Well, thank you, you know?
You feel like you have a tire on your back. Join the club.
Okay, but I was just, you know, I was just wondering about that. Thank you.
Okay, so, item nine was ratifying the fire contract. We're gonna pass that over, because we haven't got word back from the fire union yet. 3% transfers, if we are gonna discuss that further, it'll be at our next meeting on July 7th. We're passing over that, there's no need to take any action, and that leads us to a...
You might just want a way, by way of explanation, is that we have a certain period of time after the close of the fiscal year to make the money first?
Oh, yes, right. We have... We have until July 15th, and we don't know whether or not we need it, and we're going to make that decision whether or not we are gonna go forward and need that money on the 7th of July. Acting Town Administrator. This is Greg's final formal meeting as Town Administrator, unless we need a special meeting between now and the end of the month, which is not planned at the moment.
We might not let him get out this much easily, you know?
Thanks, Steve.
And our new Town Administrator, we've signed an agreement with him that was made public at previous meeting. His date of employment is August 4th, so we have a period of time between July 1st and August 3rd where we need to appoint a acting Town Administrator. And after talking to Michael Murphy, our police chief, he's volunteered to step up and do that job, and it's the reason why he's here this evening, but the board has to act and make the appointment.
Not that we feel as though we need someone with a badge and a gun to take over.
No, I think it's a case where... It's a case where his department, under him, I had that discussion with him back a week ago, he's got staff he feels that can keep the police department going, he can provide some additional time, based on the fact he has a strong staff under him, and he was perfectly happy with helping us out during this period of time. And I know that he's fully capable of doing the job, and I'm extremely happy that he's stepped up.
Appreciate it. Feel like a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. O'Leary.
Mr. Chairman, in accordance with the Town Charter, Chapter 5, Section 5, I move to appoint Michael Murphy as acting Town Administrator for a term beginning July 1st, 2014, through August 3rd, 2014.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, seconded by Mr. Yule. Discussion?
Just thank you for...
All in favor?
Thank you.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, Michael.
Well, Jeff, from the police chief's hearing, I haven't seen anybody here. I just want to comment that the reason why I did step forward is because we have very capable department heads, very experienced, and great support staff, and I just felt that at this point, we'll work together, prepare for the transition to new Town Administrator. So, it's not all me, we have, like I said, we have very capable staff, and we need them all, and as well as the board, and Greg, I'm sure, just won't call away, we won't.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Town Administrator's report?
Thank you, Bob. I just wanted to make note, as you said, this is my last meeting, and I'll be wrapping up over the next two weeks and handing the reins over to Chief Murphy. As part of this transition, I've had discussions with the chief today, and will be meeting with my staff. There are a couple of things that we need to ensure happen, which is the... Michael is the designated appointing authority for HRD and civil service, which is important is the designated Appointing Authority for HRD and Civil Service, which is important considering the fact that we have a police officer and firefighter that will be appointed within the next 30 days, uh, filling vacancies. And the other, um, transitionary item is the MSBA and the designation of the Authorized Signatory Authority. And I'm meeting with the Project Manager tomorrow to make sure that we have the proper paperwork in place to execute that. And other than that, uh, we've already begun discussions about, uh, pending projects, things that are in the pipeline. Um, for the most part, the year is ending, uh, in a positive note and the 0.3% transfers. Revenues is strong, we're in good shape. Um, staffing, other than the two positions that I mentioned, is also in good shape. So hopefully, uh, the ship will be steered clear for the next 30 days, Michael, and we'll continue to have our dialogue, um, over the next two weeks about things that are, are ongoing and, uh, to the extent the Board wants to, to be involved in those discussions, they can either contact Chief Murphy or myself, uh, to discuss those. But, uh, just as a closing note, and I, I don't really have a, a report this evening, I, I want to thank the, uh, the department heads, the employees and the residents that I've worked with over the last nine years. They've all been great and I've enjoyed it tremendously. And I've also enjoyed working with, um, all 10 members of the Board of Selectmen in my tenure, the five that are here and the five that have been here at assorted years that, uh, that I've started. I've enjoyed your support, um, your dedication, your patience, your understanding and your sense of humor. You guys have been great and, uh, it's really been a good go. And I, this is a really fine, fine community that, uh, I have a lot of affection for, so thank you and, uh, look forward to seeing you down the road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Old and new business, now start with Mr. O'Leary.
A couple of, I actually brought the transcripts here and again, I don't want to steal all the thunder, but the sports teams this year were just unbelievable, the spring sports teams. I mean, so we had the, uh, you know, they had the baseball teams, you had, uh, they had the girl softball team, you had the tennis players, you had the lacrosse all-stars, you had, uh, you have an undefeated person here who's an All-State hurdling champion, uh, we have a coach that lives in North Reading that celebrated his thousandth victory. Um, I'm sure I left someone out, uh, but it's just been phenomenal and a testament to the school department, the athletic department, uh...
Recreation.
The recreation department, uh, the feeder programs, the feeder programs, the youth programs, the feed into the high school program. And we were a small community, a small school and certainly leaving our mark here, uh, in eastern Massachusetts and, uh, they're all to be congratulated all the way up and down from the, from the youth coaches, uh, you know, all the way up to, uh, the athletic director and the coaches in the high school and, uh, all the kids and of course the parents who made the commitment to get these kids to, uh, all the practices and all the games. So I just want to congratulate them for a terrific season. The other thing I'd like to just address, Mr. Bailey Conus is a tenure here with us and again, wish him the best of, of luck in, uh, in his new term.
Thank you, Steve.
At Dudley and again Dudley's gain is, is our loss. Again, I think, uh, the last nine years, Mr. Bailey Conus has, uh, has served us extremely well. I just want to touch on a few things. As he pointed out, he served with 10 different members of the Board of Selectmen, not an easy task, uh, all different types of personalities and people to deal with. It's his credit in the Board at the time, and we've had all sorts of challenges that we've met head-on. Greg has been a true, uh, professional in handling things for us and has given us strong fiscal management, balanced budgets, enhanced fiscal reserves, improved bond rating, maintaining increasing personnel and services. And again, much of this has been achieved through improved labor relations and contract negotiations, improved relations allowed for collaboration of collective bargaining units to assist the town leaders in closing budget gaps, make necessary changes to health insurance, uh, coverage and end of career buybacks. Public trust and confidence has been built during his tenure, which resulted in five positive debt exclusion proposition two and a half override votes, as all of us know here, not an easy task. And again, it wasn't done in a vacuum and it wasn't done without, uh, us having a good person at the helm. Again, 10 different people in the Board, but, uh, the one constant is the Town Administrator's position and this Town Administrator's done a tremendous job. I mean, we've completed our police station, land acquisition for Eisenhower Park, modular classrooms, uh, two votes to effectuate the building on a new high school, middle school, which is now underway. Again, annual appropriations at town meeting routinely approved in near unanimity, played a major role in that. Past eight years, uh, nine years, significant, significant changes in management personnel through both retirement and needed changes. He appointed two Police Chiefs, two Fire Chiefs, uh, with associated superior offices in those departments, overseeing the reorganization of superior office structure within the Police Department, expansion of the number of firefighters, implementation of ALS. Pointed two head assessors, Department of Public Works Director, Finance Director, two Veterans Agents, three Youth Services Directors, uh, which was a newly created position. And again, he has left us with a, uh, a good, strong, professional leadership team and for that we're truly grateful. So Greg, you've been a true professional, appreciate you. I personally have, uh, enjoyed working with you and, uh, hope you stay in touch.
Thank you, Steve. I appreciate it, thank you. You really did your homework, Steve.
I know. Let's just touch a few things.
Yes.
There were other things.
Yes. Um, first let me start off with, uh, Greg, as, as, as a citizen before I became on the Board, then when I had my one term and, and now I am back again, uh, the things that stand out with me about you is that professional, integrity, class. All right? And you use them all interchangeably because that's who you are. And I think even in your, your closing comments, you, you reflected that. Um, you've maintained, you've helped maintain this town with a double-A rating, um, and, uh, things, through the trials and the tribulations and the issues that you, uh, had the balance and so on, uh, you did it, okay? And the town is better now than it was when you first got on Board. I can say that. And, you know, even, you know, even, even to this time, you, you, you don't, you don't stop. And, and, and the other day I got, uh, the email and I, I know, I'm not familiar with what you all have done, but, um, something near and dear to you that, uh, of the many things, I should say, uh, you sent, uh, an email that I, uh, thought was really important was that you sent a code of conduct. And I thought that was really good. I, I appreciate that because I know that there were some discussions of, from the previous Board of Selectment into this. I was not aware of how far we progressed and so on and, um, and I appreciate you sending this because I, I read it and, uh, it covered an awful lot of territory and, uh, it, it, in many cases, it's things that we should think, "No, anyway." But, but it's, it's good to have it down there and I hope that the Board, uh, continues to work off of this as, as, as we go, go forward. And, uh, so I do, do appreciate that because these things are, uh, how things function to me are important and I think that's important to you too. Things have to function a certain way and, and they work when, when they're functioning properly, all right? So, and I, and I appreciate that. So again, just to reiterate, you're professional, you have integrity and you have class. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Jeff. Mr. Chris Young?
Um, let's see. Just start off by congratulating Frank Carey again on a great career here in North Reading and all the things he's done for our school, uh, and for the teams. Sad, sad way to end the, end the season, but I have to give a lot of credit to the baseball team. Uh, they really stepped up and, and all the teams that Steve had mentioned, they all should be noted. But with this being Frank's last season, I just want to send a special congratulations off to him and his family and wish him well in his retirement. Uh, wanted to make sure all the Board members are aware about the CPC Workshop tomorrow night and the Metal Tomorrow Warner, it's at 6:30 in Room 10. Um, this, this is a meeting you all had asked that we set up and make sure that we, uh, have a chance to sit and talk with them. That is tomorrow night at 6:30 in Room 10. Greg, I'd sent you an email that I received, a, a letter from a young girl in town, an eighth grader. She was an active, uh, North Reading Girl Scout. Her name is Olivia Esposito. Did you remember getting that?
Um, I haven't seen it, Mike. I'm sure it's in my, my mailbox. I'm happy to help out however you wish.
She's, she's just, um, she didn't know where, really where to turn. She's working on her Silver, Silver Award and needed some help, uh, with the project that she's trying to do. And since we have the, um, vegetable beds out here behind Town Hall, she would like to, um, let me see if I add some additional things to the vegetable garden to help create and pollinate some plants.
Sounds like a wonderful idea.
So, uh, I told her that I would send you off her a letter, uh, which I have done and I just wanted to get back to it. I know you got a lot to do before you leave.
And we're, we're happy, happy to approve it, so, um, she just needs to coordinate with my office and with my staff. Um, I know that the bins are being used right now and they could probably use some of that, what she's suggesting.
You know, when Mike sent the email out, I, I had said that, you know, I thought it was a great idea and I supported it, but I didn't know who the, who was the overseer of that.
I didn't know.
Was it DPW or...
No, we are.
You are?
We are. I mean, those boxes were originally built to service the food pantry and they've continued, so to the extent we can provide something that assists the food pantry, we're all in favor of it.
The young lady's thoughts, as I understood them, was she wanted to put another box out there and plant, uh, some kind of wildflowers and things that enhance bees and then the bees would pollinate the, that's her project.
Actually, she was not looking to put another box, she, she just thinks there's adequate room.
Or on the edges.
To add what she would like to do.
That would be even, that would even be better.
Yeah. I think that was, that was good. So I will pass along her, Karen's information to get in touch with her. Thank you. Um, and then summer dress code, are we instituting that at the next...
I was going to mention that, yeah.
I was prepared.
I, I guess.
We usually do it the months of July and August.
Yes. Um, and then Greg, again, best wishes in Dudley. I wish you and your family well and...
Thanks, Mike.
And best of luck with your, your new opportunity.
Appreciate you, everything you employ and stuff. Thank you so much.
Mr. Cody?
Second to last doesn't make it easy. Everybody else has said what needs to be said, so I'm just going to finish off with, uh, a thank you on behalf of the residents of North Reading, Greg, for your, uh, your service here and, and two years working together. Um, I wish you nothing but the best. I genuinely hope that you, uh, you are successful and happy in your new endeavors.
Thank you, Joe. I've enjoyed working here.
I appreciate it.
Thanks so much.
I wanted to congratulate all the graduates of, uh, North Reading High School.
That's it?
The being there. Last Greg, keeping our fingers crossed, our last graduating class in the, uh, in the current high school. And, uh, you know, to make special recognition to the Honorable S.A.S., Jeremy Colebrook, if I got that right, Leanne Trichetta and Rachel Houdreau. It's always great to, uh, see the achievements of our young graduates. I've got a couple of other things. There is a, uh, I guess that Greg is going to, his last day basically here on-site is going to be the 25th. He's official, he's still Town Administrator and he still will be available if something comes up, uh, but he is going to be taking the 26th and 27th off and, uh, using personal days, I guess. The, uh, on the 25th, at noontime, the Town Hall is having some get-together and, uh, we will have a little presentation to make at that meeting for him. The 25th at noon. So Greg, uh, and I want to wish you the very, very best. It's been enjoyable working with you and, uh, as Chairman for a little over seven years of your tenure, uh, and meeting regularly on a Wednesday, uh, we've had a lot of discuss, a lot of interesting discussions and dealt with a lot of issues and, uh, it's much appreciated that we're able to do that in a, in a, in a very positive way, always considering the options and, and, I would say, 99% of the time, making decisions I think are in the best interest of the community. I think that, you know, Steve said a lot of great things about your accomplishments and, and clearly, uh, you know, sometimes we get caught up in the day-to-day issues and we forget about the big picture. And I, and I think when you step back and you look, uh, in, in your career, the big picture's been quite successful. And, uh, from my perspective, uh, being part of that over all these years, there's been a lot accomplished and I think we should all be proud, all 10 members of the Board of Selectmen. And, uh, I think that, uh, you have a lot to look forward to and as you move forward in your career and hopefully as, you know, we move forward and our endeavors, uh, we'll look back and think about some of the decisions that were made and how they've impacted the future of North Reading. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. I do have, uh, one other thing. I just wanted to, uh, we don't need a, a big discussion about it, but, uh, the, uh, the vehicle that Greg has will be turned back on, uh, July 1st. I believe you told me that you would get it here?
Yes.
We don't need to do anything?
No.
Okay.
Nope.
So the issue is, what are we going to do with the vehicle? And, uh, there were a couple of options that Michael has suggested and we've had this discussion in the past.
Which one?
This Michael.
Okay.
I'm sorry, we have too many Michaels now. So, uh, Michael has suggested, we've had this discussion in the past, uh, about, uh, keeping a vehicle here at Town Hall for, uh, town employees and eliminate the, uh, this would be the building and, uh, also, uh, Health Department and eliminate the vehicle stipend that we pay to them so that there be a town vehicle to use. Also talked about, the vehicle, by the way, currently is, uh, registered and under control of the Police Department.
That's right.
Correct. Uh, the other approach would be to, uh, I discussed this with Michael, is to turn the vehicle back to the Police Department and use it for trade or trade an older, uh, unmarked vehicle, trade an older unmarked vehicle in addition to whatever else is being traded because we can trade more than one vehicle for new police vehicles that are in fact in the budget. So, uh, I think we need to think about this. I, I do know that there is potentially an issue associated with making the change and having a vehicle here. Not so much, there's no problem having a vehicle here, the issue is taking away the stipend because it's part of a non-union employment agreement that we have to deal with, uh, in the next time it comes due. So just throwing that out on the table.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Yeah, repeat that.
There is, those stipends are defined in the, uh, non-union agreement.
So we can't, so, so we'd still have to pay the stipends even though they have the car at this point?
That's my interpretation.
Well, you've got to, when we've just extended all the contracts with the exception of one, for a year, for 12-month period.
Yeah, so we wouldn't be able to do that for a year.
For a year. Um, I guess, how old is the car? I thought it was a used car when it was bought.
No.
Three years old.
It's three years old?
Yes.
What's the longevity on this car? I don't even remember the make.
All highway miles, Jeff.
Yeah.
Well, it's not going to have highway miles anymore. Not going to have highway miles anymore.
No, but I'll tell you, it's run, it's run, it's run great on the highway.
Well, that's good.
I make no promises how it runs in town.
And there were just recently some maintenance repairs done to it.
But, but, but now it's going, now it's going to be driven locally at best, at, yeah, at best, okay? And, um, uh, it's three years old. I don't know, the value of the car is what, about $8,000?
I don't know, $8,000.
About $8,000. Um, I don't know if Greg still wants the car or not, I mean...
No, that's out of the question.
That's, uh...
It's out of the question.
I'm, I'm not interested.
You're not interested?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, um, okay, then it's just a matter of what we do with it here.
So I, I wasn't looking for an answer, you know, the car's going to be here. It's just that at some point, what we talked about over, over the years about making some changes there, this may be an opportunity to do that, but we're, I think we're locked into that agreement for another year.
Right. I, I don't, I don't necessarily favor just holding that vehicle for a year and hoping to negotiate something out of a contract. I hope to do that. I mean, if there's some use for it from the Police Department, you're going to recycle it, replace another vehicle with it. You know, to me, I think it's, uh, one of the things that we've been trying to do over the years is actually reduce the size of the fleet, not increase the size of the fleet. And, uh, we've done a pretty good job of getting a handle on it to date. Uh, I don't see any compelling reason, at least with this particular type of vehicle, to be adding it. be adding it to the fleet. So to me, I think it's, should be available for disposal.
Or a swap. He wants to take an older vehicle.
This is an agenda item, and I really think it needs some thought.
No, I just, I'm not asking for a decision.
Okay, I, you know, I think we're getting into a very.
It's new business, just putting in.
So I think, you know.
Heavy discussion on this.
Fire department has some old vehicles too. The fire department has some old hand-me-down cruisers and things like that, so maybe a use of that and swap it up makes sense.
Okay, so something for a future, I'll put on the agenda, but something that needs to be dealt with.
Yeah, Michael, talk to my ideas.
That's all I have, so I will entertain a motion to, to.
Mr. Chairman.
Go back into executive session. The purpose is a collective bargain.
Right, Mr. Chairman, I move to re-enter into executive session for the purposes of collective, collective bargaining. Such discussions in open session will have a detrimental impact on the town, and further that the Board of Selectmen will return to open session for the sole purpose of adjournment and to admit Chief Michael Murphy to the executive session.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Leary, second by Mr. Yu. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
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 Jaywalking's aye.